Welcome to the April 3rd, 2025, meeting of the Planning Board of Dobbs Ferry. I'd like to move that we open the meeting through the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The, uh... Okay, the first item on the agenda is number 12 Chestnut Ridge Way. Do we have anyone here to speak to that?
Hello, can you see me and hear me?
Yep. I know.
Yes, Niall Kane. I'm just here to present a roof deck project at 12 Chestnut Ridge Way for Casey and Dominic Romani. And let me share my screen here. Oh, I don't know, I can't find it right away. Holy moly. Things open. Anyway, you can see the, my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So this is 12 Chestnut Ridge Way here in Dobbs Ferry. And this is the house. Existing house, side of the house. This is, I guess, I don't even know when frankly, the old deck disappeared and they redid this roof. And now we are putting a new roof deck on and a stair going down to the backyard. That's the back elevation. They had this roof redone and the contractor at the time put these outriggers on to accept the stair, a little landing and stair going down in anticipation of the, the deck. The roof is dead flat, which was a bit of an issue, so we'll explain that bit when I get to the drawings. Yeah, just the context, context, context. So here's the house, putting the deck on here and the stair going down to the rear yard. And it's the elevation of the deck here. Stair comes down here, we're gonna redo this door, window and door here, which is really sort of a mess, putting the new sliding door. And we're raising up this existing sliding door in order to get the deck on and to put a new sort of drainage system to direct the water to a gutter to drain it properly. And then to exist, just, there's, we're not adding any impervious area, we're just tying it into the existing drainage system. Some details showing the deck raised above the existing roof. And it is gonna be a Trex-type system with this, this, uh, this color Trex and this railing system. And that's about it, pretty straightforward. Uh, the window, the, you know, sliding door will be Anderson with the proper, you know, stretch code UL, U rating. And then we're doing this little infill wall here to allow this enough room for the stair to come down. That will be, have the same finish as the, you know, parched, the stuccoed basement wall. And that's, that's about it. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
So what is the material of the deck again? Oh, it's a...
You know, the Trex system, um, you know, it's a PVC plastic type.
Right.
It's pretty, pretty, pretty common. All, all stock components, no custom stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Does the Building Department have any issues? Okay. Um, Valerie, you have an HRB resolution?
I do. Whereas the applicant is seeking architectural historic review approval to construct a deck. The property is located at 12 Chestnut Ridge Way. Now therefore be it resolved, the HRB of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for architectural and historic review approval is granted subject to the following conditions, and it refers to the plans dated February 20th, 2025.
I make the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for final plat approval for the subdivision at 86 Maple Street. This was previously approved, but the process expired before it was completed. Do any members of the board have questions?
I don't.
Building Department, anybody? Can? No? Valerie, any concerns?
Uh, no.
Okay. Yep, I move that we open a public hearing. You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody wish to speak to this subdivision?
86 Maple.
86 Maple. Okay, since no one wants to speak to this, I move that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Valerie, you have a resolution?
Yes, whereas the applicant is seeking subdivision approval for a proposed two-lot subdivision, the property is located at 86 Maple Street. Whereas the project, whereas the Planning Board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry adopted a negative declaration in connection with this project on November 7th, 2024, and the board reaffirms the negative declaration. And whereas the Planning Board had previously approved this project on April 6th, 2023, and the application has expired. Now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board hereby finds that a proper case exists for requiring the park, that a park be suitably located for playground or other recreational purposes within the village, and the Planning Board finds in accordance with Section 300-52J reservation of Parkland that a park cannot be suitably located on the property requiring payment for one additional residential unit. Be it further resolved, the Planning Board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for final plat approval is granted subject to the following conditions, and it refers to the final plat dated May 23rd, 2023, and then it, and then the following other conditions must be made prior to signing of the final plat. And then it goes through identifying any of the other, any remaining stormwater engineering issues from the original application, as well as that, any other deeds or dedication to the village covering all streets and parks, deeds of easements, performance bond in connection with the plat, and also hosting of a bond if needed, subject to the village attorney. And then the expiration of the final plat approval would expire within 90 days of the date of the resolution, unless granted an extension.
I make the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to adjourn the NOL, the four NOL lots, 11, 20, 21, and 22, to the May 1st, 2025 Planning Board meeting. So I'm, I move that we open the public hearing for all four lots. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move that we adjourn to the May 1st, 2025 meeting. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question on this?
Sure. Go ahead.
Daniel Burgis, 52, Los Anrode. I just have one question. At the last meeting, you said you would do, the village would do a title search. Just wondering if there's an update and if that was received or some progress, you know, just wondering about that title search.
It hasn't been received yet.
But it's, it's in the works, so?
Yes. It was ordered before we, before that last time we met.
Yeah. Is there an anticipated date?
I don't know.
Okay. And I guess, you know, once, once it, once it's received, will it be published on the website or?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
You know, once the title search is received, like, will, will that be made public?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, what's, what's the process? Will it be posted on the website or?
I'm not up to that yet.
Okay.
But it will be, it will be made public.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes.
So the, the, the public, the, the search that we...
Title search.
The title search that we, that we have put forward last month.
We ordered.
That we ordered. That's through the applicant, correct?
The applicant's paying for it.
Oh, so...
The village is...
The village ordered.
Independent. The village's title report.
I see.
We ordered.
So we ordered it at their expense according to the village code. The applicants are responsible for those kinds of expenses.
Thank you.
And typically, how would the public find out about the result? Would it be at the next meeting, once you get the result, or how?
Presumably, yes.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is 90, well, 94 Ashford Avenue, but that's also adjourned into May 1st, 25 meeting. Uh, the next item on the agenda is 33 Main Street. Do we have someone to speak to that project?
Greg Shaw? Nobody online? No, he's for, no, he's for, uh, he's for 87 Beachville.
Maybe we can look back to this. Whoa, what timing!
The very moment.
Man! No time to crap.
You're in trouble now, buddy.
No Blue Room time.
No pressure.
No Green Room time.
Let me do some jumping jacks.
Can you present the updates, the changes from the previous?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, that, that's, uh, what I was gonna say was, I'm gonna start with, I guess I've made some updates to the plans and I have some options to show you guys. And just sort of, you know, the, since our last meeting, the, the direction that, you know, we're presenting the project with, I think we've accommodated the requests, I think we've worked and have done sort of as requested. And, you know, just as a, I know we are sort of starting to work on the civil package for the project. We've, you know, been bringing engineers around and starting to look at the foundation work and sort of starting to move the, you know, that part of the project forward as well. Okay, so we've really, most of the comments, I believe, were really regarding the rear of the building and the, and possibly like the top layer of the building. That seems to be the majority of the comments. So I guess I can share my, am I sharing my screen correctly? Am I?
We should also just remind everybody that there was a joint working session?
Yes.
With you?
We had a joint working session.
And the BOT together?
That's right.
Kind of talk some of these things.
That's right. So we had, so we had a, the last meeting was a joint meeting between the town, the village board, and this board. And a lot of comments were made and, and, you know, this is, this presentation and what I'm presenting today is a reaction based on those comments. So the, the main comments were that the, they wanted the top level to appear that it's setting back, where they wanted it somehow to appear that it's setting back. So I've done that, and I've also used a lighter color. So I've set the top level back just about two feet. And we've changed the color for it to lighten it. And we've sort of made a, a roof, like a parapet line on top of the, on top of that floor. And, and, and we've pulled the decks back on that level as well. So we've done a number of things in that regard. While I'm on this picture, you know, it just came through that conversation that it would be, uh, it would be okay to basically add some units underneath as well. That seems to be an obvious, you know, thing to do, but being under the drive, that was something that, you know, I had sort of deliberated with. But it does seem that it is something that's feasible and would be appreciated. So we've added some units under there, and that, that's part of this scheme as well. So... Okay, so this, these would be the units underneath. So basically, we would, you know, extend the elevator cores, extend the stair cores, you know, provide the same egress. We would provide a building amenity space in this sort of dead zone or storage or something. We would provide a, a larger garbage room and maintenance room for the building. And I'm currently showing three units under here. And they would, the, the units on the, on this side would, my feeling, be able to walk out onto like a grade level. So that seems to be, uh, okay.
And where's the, where's the line of the, on this drawing, where would the line of the deck abo, the...
This is the deck above. This is the parking deck, this, this, this drive that's out there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken.
And so, and these are, and these are support columns. These are support columns.
Units are below the parking?
It is, and it also has to follow the setbacks lines. So it's, you know, this is, this is something that is in compliance with the setbacks. So the roadway extends further, but the setbacks are for the building. And just, you know, I, I think they'll be actually great units. I think they'll be very comfortable and will be, will be nice.
And the only light into those units is from the, is that the south side?
The west side.
West side, yeah, the west side.
Okay. So the rest of the building continues up. And on the top floor, we are showing like a balcony. So this is the, this is the change, we're showing a balcony for this version, okay? Now, this is the foundation plan, this is the elevations. This shows this in elevation, just kind of what's happening in elevation for this version. And then, let me get to it. And then we have a bonus version, a bonus version to look at, which steps the sides in on both sides. Now, what that does is, that makes these two units basically a two-bedroom now. I can no longer really have a three-bedroom up there, but I, I guess that's okay, that's, that's, that's what it is.
What's, what's the setback?
Uh, I think it's 30 inches on the side. So I went 30 inches. So this is what it looks like in, um, this is what it looks like in elevation. So it, it, you know, I think it, it does, I think, make a dramatic difference as far as that being said. As, as far as the plan, though, and I kind of wanted to explain, so before it kind of came up to this point, but this was always step back. So at the front, the building is, on the sides, is stepped back a little bit further. So it is stepped back in the front. So we're really just talking about the rear section of the, of the property, of the project. So I think they're great two-bedroom units, I, I don't see a problem with that, if that's important, if that's an important feature. You know, that obviously we could do this. I believe this is just the parapet or something in the front, I'm not quite sure what that is, but that's, that's not, would not be there. But, you know, these would be lovely units, have a, I would still step back the balcony on the top level to make it look, you know, a little bit step back. And this is, you know, just a rendering of sort of what it would look like with the, with the step back. So with, these are, these are my changes. So any comments or any?
Have you added any parking for the additional units?
We have not, no. We'll have to pay for that parking as well.
And how many spaces?
Uh, it, it, well, we're adding three units, so I think it's a total of 19. So I think we're providing 15, so we'd be looking to either pay for four or potentially five spaces. So I think that's the current, the current estimate of spaces. As, as I think, you know, I've discussed, due to the proximity to the train station, I think this is sort of in a, a zone where it's believable that people may not have a car, which is, you know, just something to consider.
I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, would these be affordable units or where are they?
Yeah, so there's, currently there's four affordable units for the project. So there's, there's four affordable units for the project. I think we're required to have two. We're discussing whether or not we would add an additional one downstairs, like if we would make one of those affordable or do something to, to put that around. But I think, I, you know, I think that that's part of the, part of the discussion, is, is basically, you know, like we're, we're doing four already and then, you know.
Right.
I think by the nature of the project itself, they will be affordable. Because I believe adding 19 units that are not, you know, ginormous, you know, you know, these are, these are a place that someone could live and rent, and it's not, you're not renting a massive apartment with all this space that's like in a different building, this, these should be affordable just by their size and dimension and the, you know, location to the train and where it is in town. So, you know, I believe that not just the moniker of being affordable, but I just think the building itself will be at a certain level that will be affordable. And just by having more units in town will eventually make everything more affordable.
Robbie, you have a comment?
No, I, I like this project a lot. I, I guess I, the side setback on the two sides, I guess, what's the trade? Like, I guess, when I look at the roof plan, as you said, the front part of the building is...
Yeah, let me go, let me go to the, let me go to like the earlier plans, just so you kind of...
Yeah.
Get an idea of really what it is. So if you're looking at the front, just the dark spot is what's closest. And that is, I, I believe, a 10-foot setback, I'm not quite sure. So, so it already is, so from the front, it is step back. And then for this version...
So I guess the question is, the penalty, the penalty for you is that you, once you do that, you can't, it's a, you can't do it?
I'm going, I'm going the wrong way. Let me, let me, let me show you on the, on the third floor plan, okay? So that's, so that's the roof plan of the previous version, showing it extending out. So this piece does step back on the side, this piece does step back on the side, but the rear of the building steps back in the back, but it doesn't step back on the sides. I, you know, understand the architectural significance of the step back and what the purposes of it. I, you know, there's just a, this is the rear of the building, our goal here is to create apartments and, you know, the front of the building, 100%, I want to make it as beautiful as possible. This is, you know, this is important to me, as well as the town. So, oh, sorry.
But the additional side setback prevents you, that you have to...
So this is the difference, you can no longer fit this bat, this, on the side, you can no longer fit the extra rooms, you have to move things around. But this, this in no way is, you know, this is a three-bedroom, that, that's the difference. So you have one, two, three, and you have, you know, one, two, three. You know, these are, this is still a relatively small unit, it's not a big unit. So, but these, you know, but they're three bedrooms versus two bedrooms. Um, I think the two bedrooms are great. I, I'm not in charge of marketing or real estate sale, I'm just, this is, this is what I'm doing. But, you know, my opinion is, is that a, a great two-bedroom could, in this scenario with the rooftop and the view and everything, could be worth as much as a three-bedroom? I don't know, it doesn't seem to be that, that's not gonna be the deciding factor.
I guess my feeling is, because I think we're gonna review this anyways, the, since you're gonna have to do, one of the things we're gonna talk about in a minute, I guess, is providing other views from other perspectives. I guess I would, I would say that if, that we could maybe defer how important we think it is to have this side setback until we have us, like, some of the other photo simulations of some of the other things.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, our goal is to, is to move the project forward, so, like, you know, if we could limit it to a defined, you know, issue, then let's, let's attack that issue, and then we could, you know, hopefully resolve that issue and figure out what, what is the offending part.
So Greg, that view is as if you're standing on top of the embassy center?
This, this view would most likely be like a drone shot view. This is, you know, if you're, so I did have a view, let me see. This view is if you're standing at the train station. So you, so you come out the train and...
And in this, I'm sorry, I just discussed the image, is not, is that in our, the side, the issue of the additional little setback on the side doesn't show here or does?
No, 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 I haven't done that. But, but it, but what does show is the color. So the color of just showing what it would look like with a different color and, and, which I guess would match the building next to mine's color, I'm not sure if that's a, that's a, you know, good thing, but certainly we could pick a color. My, my, my concept was just that a lighter color on top would maybe make the building appear lighter. And then in the front, it doesn't do that, it's something different in the front, it's a different design. You know, the, the, the rear of the project is, you know, it, it is the rear of the project, you know, so, and that is something that, you know, people are gonna have to grapple with. We wanna build a beautiful front facade, but my client certainly, you know, I, I could come up with fantastical, you know, architecture for the rear of the building, but that, that would most likely, you know, not be reasonable for my client. So I would, you know, we need to have a reasonable sort of approach to it. I think either one of the scenarios that I presented work, I don't see any other, I don't see them not working, so I think that they're, they're, they're reasonable. And my other opinion is, is that these buildings here, like this view, this, this building will be developed at some point, hopefully shortly. The building next to it will probably be developed, hopefully shortly. The building on the other side of the brick building behind this building will hopefully be developed shortly. And, you know, I believe all those projects should be done in a, in a way that provides great apartments and utilities and better uses than a, than its current like sort of hodgepodge of car parking and, and other things. This is, this is, I think, a, a very important part of the town, and, and these, these lots are, have been unappreciated.
Could, could, on the, and then I guess you would also do alternative side elevations, right? Where you would see the setback line?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have those yet. Okay, yeah.
I had to, I had to, I had to sort of push to get these last-minute sort of modifications in. So, you know, we, we will, you know, and, and tell me if that's the direction you'd like me to pursue, then I, let me, let me direct my energies more towards that and, and get you what you, what you're looking for.
And then to Laura's earlier point, isn't there an op, there isn't an opportunity to put at least in the two units, at least in two of the units, windows on the side of those units, the ones that are below at the lowest level? I'm looking at... I'm looking at the elevation.
There, there, one, yeah, I mean, there's opportunities for lots of, yes, definitely on the side. I think the issue is, is that on the side at the, yeah, I think, yeah. I think if we want to put some windows on the side, if you feel that's something that would humanize the building, I think that that's not a problem.
Just make the units nicer, I think, right?
Just to get some daylight in there.
Get some more, a little more light.
Yeah.
At least the two side units.
I appreciate that you're utilizing that space below instead of, you know, just feeding it to wildlife or whatever, you know, in the beginning the proposal was. I think it's a good solution for that.
Yeah, I think, I think housing is appreciated and it, it seemed to be a wasted sort of space. I was, I was struggling with what to do with it at first and, and then it just was like, it was, it's, you know, I was like, well, could you live under the drive thing and it, why not? It's kind of interesting, you know? Maybe when I was a kid, I wanted to live under a bridge, so this is, you know?
I mean, you may.
Similar effect.
You may hear the traffic above you possibly.
Well, I, I mean, we're going to have to address that in construction. I, I've, yeah, I mean, soundproofing will be, will be key for that thing, but that's, that's certainly not impossible.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing a view, if you're standing on Palisades Avenue, just looking straight up at the?
Where?
Towards Main Street.
The back?
Further up from the train station.
Yeah, that's it, basically, yeah.
Further back.
You already did that.
Although that's not a real view, you said, right? Because you're actually, if you're on Palisades.
I mean, it's, yes, it, you know, it's, it's at a, it's at a false height because I'm, you know, trying to, so let me, let me see if I have something.
How much would be blocked by the Embassy Center?
Probably hard to do that.
There was originally a rendering we did from that view and it didn't really have much effect. Okay, so this is something that you guys had asked for. You guys had asked for a full section down to the road. So this is what we're showing. I am not a hundred percent sure, this probably came off of a government GIS contour map, but I think for this purpose, I think it explains what's happening. So, you know, our first floor is over the roof of the buildings below. It's just, this is unavoidable, this is unavoidable, so we have to figure it out. But as I was saying in the previous view, is that I believe that there'll be buildings blocking that view or will be, you know, from the street, if that's the main concern as you're walking up the street, there will be, you know, you'll, you'll have to look at, you know, you have to look at these other buildings and then this will be sort of up in the, up in the distance. But I understand, right now, it's highly visible, so that, that I do understand.
I'd like to thank you for listening to everyone during our workshop with the Board of Trustees. I think you've come back with some answers to the concerns that were brought up. I like the idea of the apartments underneath the deck.
Yeah.
I think the more units we can get close to transit in downtown is a benefit to the village.
Yeah.
The, I like the setbacks on the fourth floor. You know, one of the concerns that did come up was massing and I think it, it helps. I'm certainly willing to keep an open mind and, you know, when we get more, you know, renderings that show that, that we can, we can make a decision, you know, we can talk about it again, but personally, I like that a lot. Now, as far as a list of views that we're, we'd like to look at and be able to present to the Board of Trustees, it sounds like, I mean, from a list standpoint, I mean, I know, I would like to see, you know, coming up Main Street, coming down Main Street, you already have a head-on from, from directly in front of it. And then coming up Palisades and coming down Palisades and then directly in front of the building on Palisades, I guess directly behind the building.
So, so? There could be a series, right? If there could be a series of views along Palisades, from the train station up to another oblique view down from the higher point of view?
So the side views, Main Street views, and Palisade views?
Well, the Main Street ones, I think, are kind of there, right?
Well, I don't know, I don't, I don't see any here that show, you know, as if you're walking down Main Street or you're walking up Main Street, what you're going to see.
No, I'll, I'll show you both views, it's okay.
That would be helpful. And I think it would help the board.
Like more of an oblique streetscape kind of view?
Okay, are there any other architectural issues that we want to talk about before we get into?
I think I'll look for it.
Okay, Valerie, sorry. Okay. Valerie, do you want to start on the?
Sure, so I just want to talk a little bit about some of the, the review process. So we do need to start the SEACRA process, which hasn't been started yet, mostly because, first of all, you're, the EAF that you filled out has a lot of, a number of incorrect information. And so I sent you, I issued a memo last week and I sent you an actual link. So you'll need to go under that link and actually use the forms there to start putting, populating that. This particular site falls under a critical environmental area, which is similar to, it's the same thing that the Knowles fell under, so Section 167-6B of the Village Code requires any property that's adjacent to or falls within a critical environmental area, that's an unlisted, turns to a type one. So it will need a long-form EAF associated with this. So, once we have that, it also requires a coordinated review with any involved agencies. So, once, as soon as I get that, I can actually start doing that coordination review and send that out. The Village Board has indicated they want to be lead agency, which I think this board has already said they're okay with, but we still need to start that process. There are a number of other comments that I had in my memo and I just basically reissued that memo on March 28th, but these comments go back for a number of months. They specifically deal with, we need more information on a lot of the, the work that's going to take place on site. This is ultimately going to be part of the SEACRA review. Like, for example, similar to what we've been reviewing on other projects on steep slopes, stabilization of steep slopes, what kind of excavation is required from the site, the methods, if there's going to be blasting or anything like that. The construction impacts, because this is a very tight site and it's in a very populated area of the downtown, so we're going to need some additional information on that. Erosion and sediment control, stormwater, and I'll turn that over to Anthony to really talk about that. And then we talked a little bit about the visual impacts as well. So there is still a lot of information that's needed and I have a number of other items in my review memo, which focuses on like how you're going to deal with garbage, emergency services, they really need to be looked at, because I think some of the apartments will not, like, it doesn't appear that some of the, there will be direct access to the rear apartments if there's an emergency taking place. So that's something that just this board needs to recognize, you know?
Can you send me this, because I can't hear a thing over the siren, I'm sorry.
I can wait a second.
That's fine, it's just, I think, I think I, I received your, the comments from the other day, we're going to start working through this stuff. I think, you know, I think now that we're moving, we seem to be moving this project forward, we want to sort of address these things. We are bringing on a civil engineer in order to start accommodating a lot of this, the things we're talking about, which is, which is the first thing, is I'm going to need to drill some tests on the site. And so that's my first problem, is how to get this equipment down to my site, so I'm trying to solve this right now.
Okay, great.
Anthony, do you have a?
Yeah, we had a memo in January, you mentioned you're working up the civil side of things, so that's pretty straightforward, stormwater, sewer questions, rating, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Also, construction impacts and it's good to hear you're going to have, you're going to do some onsite borings.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're going to need like a geotechnical.
Yeah, that's who we're hiring, we're hiring a geotech.
Good.
We've got to do the borings, you know, arm positioning, the borings along the front wall, we have to check the stability of that existing retaining wall. My proposal is to basically put concrete pins along the whole wall and replace that rubble wall with like a new concrete, sort of like piling. I'm kind of showing it as a double stack piling, so we have a larger lower section, a footer, a larger lower section, and then we come up on top of that. So we're having some type of concrete bulwark against the street, so we're going to have to do pilings that represent that. And then we'll have a couple pilings down the site. I think the original assessment from the geotech is that the, this site should be good to build on. It does not reflect some of the other problems on some of the other steep sites. There should be, you know, solid earth underneath it or granite or something. So they feel that, once they get this information, the borings, we should be able to design a foundation and, and everything.
Right, right, that's, that's all going to be good information at this stage too, so the board has an idea of the impacts, you know, from construction. The stormwater is going to be important too, in terms of what you could do there.
Yeah.
With the steep slopes and, and you can't do infiltration.
I, I, you know, I'm going to leave that to Cyrus. I think the, I think the first sort of order of business is we want to make sure the bulk and zone in the building is basically the way it is and then we could sort of like fill all these technical things.
It could have a, you know, pretty large impact on your site plan.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, that's definitely key to, you know, this next step, looking at that.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm going to leave all those questions to the civil, I'm going to let him take that hit.
One thing I think you also need to look at is that parking area, because technically you have, people are going to be entering and leaving the same parking from the same access point, but you have that turn there. So, I mean, there's going to be a big blind spot, so.
We're going to need some, either mirrors mounted or some type of lights, I guess.
But I think you need to start figuring that out too.
Okay, traffic.
The board's really got to feel comfortable, like, yeah.
Okay, I think, yeah, we'll try to accommodate some type of, we'll call it traffic study light. We'll, we'll try to do something that's, addresses some of those issues.
I mean, you know, I think, isn't this a site that Christina Griffin had a proposal for many years ago?
But she was depending on access before they built?
No, the only reason I'm saying, were you aware of that, that there was, that there was a previous proposal?
I think there was like ten different proposals, including one, one from this gentleman right here.
Yeah, so I just don't know, I don't know what extent there's intelligence that's already been gathered that you could, that you could tap, but might be clearer, cleaner for you. Of course, you're going to have to certify your own results, but I don't know if you could learn anything from Christina or any of her.
I, I think maybe I, I've seen those, I don't know what, you know, I, I think that our plan is, this is, this is, this is the plan, so we need to work towards accommodating this. You know, my feeling is, is what would be the dream scenario is somehow the power line and telephone pole just get magically buried right in front of the project.
You can do that with Photoshop.
So, I mean, you know, like, this is, this is the real, for me, this is the number one issue that the town should be addressing. But anyway, so, you know, we, we know where we need the curb cuts, we know, you know, we know what we have to do. You know, my opinion is we'll probably wind up, you know, in the current scenario, probably moving that power pole or putting in a secondary power pole and doing something to sort of move that around.
I can just tell you, I mean, Dan, this is something that the fire inspector is going to need to look at, because if, you know, because if those wires are there, they're going to need, you're going to need some emergency access to that building.
Yeah, we have, we have it. I think we showed this to the fire chief, I think we showed it to the fire people when we first designed it. It has, I, I think it has either twelve or fourteen foot clear on that alleyway, so you can get a piece of equipment back there to set up. And I think we showed it to them and they were, they were okay with the project, they did not have a problem.
Right, I mean, because I know.
And this building will be fully sprinkled and have an elevator that can hold a stretcher. So this, this.
No, I know, but I've been, I've worked on other projects where if you have the electrical lines that block the front and then you can't have access to the rear, they usually ask you to either move the electrical lines or bury them. So, I mean, it's just something that definitely needs to be.
We will share with the fire department.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I mean, yeah, those are some of the technical issues that we're going to have to address, but I think, I think the first step is, is just, you know, making sure that we have a project and that everyone's on board and we can then, you know, because my client is going to have to spend significant dollars to hire all these next phase of consultants. And so, you know, they, they're doing their math and, and that's really what it is, is they want to know that they have a working project.
Speaking of which, Valerie, the fourth floor requires special permission from the Board of Trustees, is that correct? And what's the process for that?
Yeah, it does. And it specifically says, so the Board of Trustees can grant the fourth story, but it's with, the Board of Trustees shall take into consideration recommendations from the planning board and AHRB in considering the impacts, including but not limited to view shed, solar access to streetscape and surrounding buildings, use and enjoyment of the old Proton Aqueduct, inconsistency with character of the individual building and surrounding buildings. So, that is ultimately part of your recommendation back to the board.
Okay, so it'd be part of the main recommendation.
Right.
Got it.
Look, it's a tough site. I mean, just speaking for myself, I'm really super enthusiastic about this project. So I don't know how the other, like, I don't know what you're looking for exactly from us.
No, I mean, I, like I said, everyone seems, everyone seems good, you know, obviously that's it. We just, we need to, we just want to know our path forward and that the path forward is, you know, obviously, you know, changing engineering is one thing, changing apartments and floors and sizes and, you know, those things, you know, while they're still moving, it just makes it too hard to, to move ahead. But if things stop moving, then we could, then everyone's great, you know, we're going to, we can go ahead, they can go ahead and, and we can provide you with all the backup that you require, any, any views, any documents. We could certainly tweak anything on that design from that point, you know, we're really talking about like, you know, at that point, we're trying to, you know, you know, we have to build the core of the building, then we have to build the, you know, the infrastructure of the building. And then finally, we get to like what makes the building as beautiful as possible on the outside. So we want, you know, we want to make sure that we have everything covered.
And Anthony, Anthony mentioned that maybe you should probably provide us like a memo, right, in response to our, our comments and then as well as some of the other things we brought up tonight.
Okay, I, I will write that and, and reissue to you guys with the views and just whatever is updated.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add at this point?
I like it, thank you.
There's one other thing I just want to mention, the, the county also provided comments and I think it'd be good for the applicant to respond to those as well.
Okay, thank you. Were those sent to me as well?
They should have been, they were, they were sent, the county had comments a few months ago, so if you haven't received them, we can send them to you.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to confirm what, what's, where I'm at.
Okay, are you clear on next steps?
Okay, next steps, there we go.
I guess you have to decide, well, you have to long form, there's a laundry list of things, and I guess you'll have to decide whether you'd be ready by May first, come back again, or whether you?
I mean, you, you guys, you know, you guys tell me, like, what, what, I mean, I feel like I have to come back with, with these images, or I could send them to you, we don't necessarily have to meet. If I, if I send you the images, you guys could, you know, get on a, get in a call or whatever you guys do and tell me where to go, if it's more efficient for me to go.
We're not allowed to do that.
Okay.
Well, I think.
Well, okay, so in any event.
I recommend we probably, I think, I recommend that maybe the applicant starts focusing on the site plan aspects and some of the other engineering aspects first.
Okay, okay.
And then we can deal with some of the visuals.
Okay, okay. So I'll submit the views, I'll submit that, and then we'll, we'll get the engineering stuff together and I will take it upon my, you know, intuition that things, things seem to be good enough to move forward.
Yes, this is a pretty high bar, it feels like there's some, it's a tough site, but one that should be built on, you know, to achieve the other goals of the conference.
Yeah, I think the issues you have, you know, the stormwater, the sewer, the creating that, that's going to exist no matter what.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, listen, there's obviously a lot of techniques for accommodating stormwater, there's, you know, retention, there's, you know, seeping back in, there's, you know, connecting to the existing system in the town. So I'm not going to comment on which one it is, because I don't, I don't really know, but maybe it's a combination of all three. You know, we have to figure out what's the, what's the best solution for that. But yeah, I think we're going to know, we're going to work on getting these borings done and have that part of the process and then start this next round of, of work and engineering.
All right, so just to recap, you're going to respond to the planning memo, you're going to respond to the engineering memo?
Yep.
You're going to address the SEACRA?
Yep.
You're going to check with the fire department through?
Yeah, we'll check with the fire department again. Yep, we'll check with the fire department again.
Um, and you're gonna work on those views that we discussed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sounds, sounds great.
And please, please submit the, uh, expand, um, the full EAF form as soon as possible so I can get that stuff.
Okay, all right, great.
Oh, and there's also the Westchester County.
Comments, okay, lots to do, lots to do.
It's a good project.
Fun, good, good stuff, thank you everyone, nice seeing you all, all right.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is eighty-seven Grand View Avenue, pre-submission conference for site plan approval for proposed exterior alterations and second floor addition with covered porch.
Good evening, my name is Grandview Farmer Brothers. We are proposing a small addition, so place additions on room, um, outside the residence. The addition itself is still given. So there's currently a small sunroom in this location, eleven and a half feet wide by eleven and a half feet. Proposal is plans to remove the sunroom, utilize the existing foundation, and build in small, um, small two-story addition. Four level. Level. Let me just check. Can you hear me? Be more. South. Use of actual house itself and side yard, this is south side yard. Seven. Half. Here. Then. Make sure that I was speaking. Um, we, five, I'm. And. And it's creating a section. Second floor level, we started the dressing room. Around here. Proposed elevations from the front yard, we only see the five and a half profile. And it's elevated significantly above the street. And then this is from the, the side yard, you can see the three-story addition. There is also a covered patio, poses part of the project, and that's the side profile of patio. For rear view. Process. There is actually known for use of the project utilizing this foundation. The, uh, new covered porch over. Did receive some memos, memo from New York to provide all measures. Provide, of course, need. Experience. That's essential bit, and first, I don't know about other factors.
Sure, sure.
Existing home, as I was showing in photos above, it's, um, finished stucco, light gray stucco. The tail will be to maintain that same finish, so light gray stucco, like windows, and dark gray.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Seems straightforward.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Okay, Anthony, you're, you got a memo for this?
Yeah, just a minor comment, uh, was mentioned, just erosion control measures during construction are needed, that's it.
Okay, Valerie, anything from you?
Uh, no.
Okay, Dan, anything from the building department? It's been proposed that we waive site plan on this. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to this application? All right, then I move that we waive site plan for this, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Valerie, you have an AHRB resolution?
I do. So whereas the applicant is seeking architectural historic review, uh, approval to construct an addition, the property is located eighty-seven Grand View Avenue. Uh, now therefore be resolved, the AHRB of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for historical and historic review approval is granted subject to the following, and it refers to the plans set, uh, dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
I make the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
You too.
All right, the next item on our agenda is forty-seven Walgrove Avenue, pre-submission conference for site plan approval for proposed modification and expansion of existing garage. Do we have someone to speak to this application? Patty? Patty, what sort of, um, home business or activity is, is gonna, this, is this structure gonna be used for?
Um, Boris.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Boris is a artist because of fabrications. He's been working in the garage now for several years and he needs to almost double the size of the garage. He's got a two-hundred-and-thirty-three square foot existing space, he'd like to add a hundred and eight square feet. So have a studio working for.
Um, what sort of fabrication is?
What I saw online are sort of wooden curved sculptures.
Um, yes.
Oh, he didn't, he should have looked.
I'm not really, um, prepared to talk about his artwork. It's interesting.
No, it is interesting.
Yeah, he does, uh, nice looking stuff, and I think he's participated in some of the artists' tours, you know, so, and he's very serious. This isn't, uh, you know, some, it's not like, you know, big-eyed children painting on buildings.
No, 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 you know, obviously our concern is, um, power tools, noise, dust, chemicals.
Yeah, it's, it's nothing that, you know, I've been there when he's actually just stopping working. And there's nothing that's going on, it's lightweight stuff relatively. It seems very, part of his aesthetic seems to be like not really defined gravity, um, having very few. And it's lightweight stuff, so it's quite, but I don't see anything that's concerned in terms of effect. It's not like it's cambering, that'll twelve-foot, um, you know, marble.
Casting bronzes.
But in any case, it's what he's been doing already in the, in the, in the garage, in the existing garage.
Right, so I think it's, um, you know, I think, I think it's a nice thing, I, you know, we don't, we don't, we actually have a good colony of artists, Dobbs, and we do the art, the work and stuff, but I think it'd be great to have more people doing this, take it a little in the neighborhood where they're living. You know, it's really fun, some artists who does.
Okay, well, sorry I sidetracked you, please go ahead and present the project.
Um, first, let me say Patty Steinberg from Gotham Design, Planning and Development, um, here representing Boris and, uh, not his wife. And, um, I think you guys kinda know where it is, but I show it here. Um, it's a, it's one of those nice little houses, it's a long Walgrove. Um, it, the garage has been there for a long time. Um, there'd be no way that you really could put a car in that garage at this point. So it's not like we're at risk of losing parking space, it's got a decent driveway. Um, I've already, I've got some photographs of a familiar of those things. Um, the, the biggest concern, I think, I mean, here's just getting the kind of contact to the neighborhood. Um, you can see the sub- parcel of it's between the neighbors, you can see the garage, um, sitting back in there. You know, it's, um, here's, you know, here's kind of the close-ups of how it all works. Um, in front, one of the concerns we have is, um, is there, in a minute, I'll tell you about a variance that we're gonna need. We have applied already to the, uh, to the zoning board. Um, and anything we do with this board next has to get the zoning board completed first, so. Um, we understand that, we are hoping, we hope it along, but, um, we understand the need for that. Um, but things like if we wanna move it over a little bit so we wouldn't need the variance, I just wanna make it clear that the driveway, you know, keeping the driveway coming into this is, um, you know, is part of the, the function of it and we are actually replacing the garage door on the design. So it's something that you still be able to, to be able to come into the truck, you know, drop things off, pick things up. So, we keep this in the existing location is important. Um, here, you see the garage, you see there's a tree that's kind of hanging over the house a little bit. Um, that's actually on the neighbor's property. Um, the applicant is very concerned with making sure that we don't do anything that has, is hazardous to that tree. We've actually designed the roof so that we don't, um, risk approaching on the tree or causing a harm. Uh, we also have a water problem in here, we have the, uh, you know, I saw people actually identify the Clinton Avenue River on Saturday, which was kind of a great event. Uh, but that, then we do have the Walgrove River, which you guys are actually doing a lot of work on right now. And it affects the drainage in there, which is commendable. Uh, but what happens in storms is heat gets, you know, the, the whole yard gets wet. So one of the things we're doing is, again, we don't want to blow the bottom of the tree, we're raising the slab, we're gonna leave the existing slab in place instead of moving it. We're gonna pour a new slab on top of it, we're gonna pitch the edges of that down, so this will be above where water would otherwise be able to get into this space. You know, it's six inches, it doesn't, you know, contribute to the height in any significant way, so I think we're good with that. Just some more shots of the yard, and you can actually see in that lower shot and over here too, we've kind of outlined where the expedition would be and how it fits. There's a rope and some of these wood that are actually installed, and I'm here, they would not mind if you guys would have a concern if you wanted to stop over and see it. Do you see them or do you want me to walk over here?
Thank you.
This is clear.
Mostly.
You know, it fits in nice, it's, it's a small yard, um, but it's a nice yard. Um, this is the existing structure, as simple as it gets. Um, here, just some, you know, the existing site plan on the left, um, proposed, and kind of this is the existing, we kind of focus on that, um, piece up in the left-hand corner. Um, we're, that's where we're expanding it out. We are moving the structure further from the backyard, uh, back, setback, and we're gonna have it being compliant with the accessory structure. The climate right now is not, um, so we are removing that, not permitting. Um, what we are doing is because we're lengthening the wall, not really lengthening it, but shifting the wall so the garage stays the same size, uh, but further from the back. We're changing the position of the wall along the side, and that side only has a setback of one point nine feet, where it was supposed to be five. So that's why we have to put a zoning board, but we're not making it worse than, you know, I don't think you'll be injurious to any of their properties, um, just stuff you don't need, just a food, but obviously we have consideration. So here's kind of the floor plan and the section, floor plan is again a very simple rectangle, but with the garage door, um, so that he can open that up and actually do, you know, work, and nice weather, I've gone over and he'll actually be doing, uh, things sitting on the outside. So it's, you know, it kind of expands his usable work area. Um, the section of this is quite quirky for such a small, small project, but he needs some storage space to have materials, so he's, uh, asked us to provide him with a loft. So there's, uh, the loft with a, you know, uh, basically the equivalent of a, you know, library stair that he can get up to it. Um, windows, glass significantly on the side facing the house, back facing the front of the property, only one window on the back, um, and a couple of windows on the corners in the, on the side, the face of the yard, with the idea that that rectangular, or almost square piece in there is a place where he can actually hang pieces. When he's like working on, wants to display them, so these, he'll have parties and people come over to see his work, it's outside. Um, the outside is, you know, a vibrant part of his, you know, his process, which is nice. Um, at this point, we're proposing metal roofs, um, we've got, you know, very simple siding, some sections vertical, some sections. Um, I think it's, you know, it's interesting for a small structure, you can see how we tucked the roof line in there so that we don't disturb them. Um, and these are distant colors, um, this, we have changed the elevation there that you see with the windows at the top. Instead of six small windows, we made that three windows, same space for the same purpose, bring in some light in a nice way. You, you know, have, uh, good ventilation in the building, so this is gonna have a air, air heat pump, very small, but it's nice and I have to use it. Um, I think this is an electrical plan, and I think that's anything I need to show. If you've got questions, certainly let me talk.
Are there any, uh, so fire, fire considerations needed, like if he's working with wood and glue and?
Um, I think he, he's required, he'll be required to have a fire, he should be smart about fire things. I don't know if you get it, if that being required in something like this, but I would think that. Um, there's nothing he's doing to say is impossible, I think, other than you've got sawdust and power tools. And if you had a shellac and you use rags, you put them in the same thing, you should have a fire. But he knows, he knows.
Okay, good.
He knows how to do it.
And just cuz it's in the residential area, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can address that picture of it, and, um, you know, I think the real good thing is have the right kind of fire. Make sure you keep the. Now, my ask on it is, and I understand this is an ask, it's not fire, if we would be able to call for a public hearing subject to, um, the zoning board. So if we don't get it, if we do call for the public hearing, if we haven't gotten a decision by zoning board, we will be back today. We got approval today, we're back for hearing, but not have to come back to have you call for a hearing.
Valerie?
No, I was just looking at Dan Romer, cuz Dan, you were talking about the waiver.
Or if yous do have the ability to waive, um, it's a small variance here, so you would have the ability to issue a waiver on it, then they wouldn't need zoning board either.
What's the variance for? I mean, how much?
It's for like.
The side setback.
Of how much?
It's one point nine now, we're leaving it the same, we're not changing.
Right.
They're just extend, extending the non-conforming by one foot nine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable with waiving this one, I think it's just a little big for, for me. Um, uh, Valerie, from a planning standpoint, um, do we have, do we feel like the artistic nature of this and the low-volume nature of it eliminate the concerns about the, um, home-based business?
Yeah, so I think, um, Dan, um, provided everybody copies from the accessory, um, the accessory uses, specifically home-based business. And I think he highlighted specifically on the home-based business number seven, if you look, it's on the staple package. Cuz that really dealt with like no equipment shall be used or processed, conducted, which creates noise, vibration, glares, fumes, odors detectable to the normal senses of the boundary line of the premises. So I think, um, maybe it might be good for, if you're gonna call for a public hearing, maybe have the applicant just kind of respond to maybe that section in particular, ones through ten, just to, you know, for the record that what you're, what they're, what you're approving would, their business would meet those requirements.
That's a good idea.
And at a public hearing, presumably since everyone will have been noticed, if people in the past have been bothered by odors or smells and noises, they would have something to say about it. The, I have only one architectural, I like this little building, but can you go to the, to your elevations, the west elevation? So, uh, that one. So I just, I feel like there are like some things that are near misses in terms of alignment. And in particular, the far left-hand side of the windows on the upper level.
Don't line up with the.
They sort of are just, they're either, they should either be on it. They sort of are just, they're either, they should either be on it or far, or you should move the windows over a little. I mean, the doors, because they don't need to be symmetrical, right? The whole building's asymmetrical, so that symmetrical entry, those doors could be moved slightly to the left. The windows pushed slightly to the right, and that could align. But there's something, when I look at it, it looks like something just missing on, on, on some relationships that should be there.
I will certainly look at it, but you can also look at, see the left and right door, the space between the right door and the window are equal. Two spaces on each side of the door are equal, everything does center.
Yeah, it centers, but they don't, like, I don't think centering is important here. This is not a symmetrical building, right? It's a very asym, deliberately asymmetrical building. So those alignments, the, to me, are more important. Now, I don't know, maybe you should at least draw some alternatives for the next meeting, and if your client is willing.
Let me try one idea really quickly on you. If you had vertical line extending, the garage should pick up at a small angle. That would all be both spectral and aligned, it might be the best of all works.
Maybe, I, I don't know, I think if you could do a couple of quick alternatives that are, that work for the client and that work for you, that would be my only, that's, otherwise, I think it's, you know, it's a cute little building, and I like the idea of the project.
We got approval.
Does anybody else have any issues they want to bring up at this time? No? Um, any reason not to call for a public hearing at the next meeting?
I think we should.
Okay. So I move that we call for a public hearing at the next meeting, we have a second, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
See you next month.
Thank you.
Eighty-seven Beachdale Road, pre-submission conference for site plan approval for proposed demolition of his existing structure to build new single-family home on existing foundation. Do we have someone to present this project?
They're online, that's Brian Hopkins.
Yes, uh, hi, members of the board, Mr. Chair. My name is Brian Hopkins, I'm the architect, presenting on behalf of my clients, Ivan Aramli and Cameron Samad, uh, for the project at DD seven, Beachdale Road. Um, give me one second so I can show my screen.
You see it?
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so the site itself is on Beachdale Road. Road. Oops, sorry. Um, the site itself is on Beachdale Road, um, really at the, the border between, uh, uh, Dubs Ferry and, and Hastings, um, kind of right by where Hollywood is. Um, it's a very large lot, um, over two acres. And, um, if you guys are familiar with Beachdale Road, I know that I wasn't. It's a little private cul-de-sac with only three or four houses on it that dead ends, um, somewhere over here.
How about you, Alan, do you know it?
Yes.
Um, so the, uh, so the existing structure, I just want to go through the numbers, um, a little bit. Um, this is the coverage diagram, this is the existing structure. Um, there is an existing rear patio that is gonna be demolished, and we're gonna be replacing it with a deck. Um, also, the only other change that we are making to the site plan, uh, I will review this with you, but we're basically building on the existing foundations, except for this wall here, which we are gonna be pushing out to accommodate a larger garage. So when we look at the, uh, proposed site plan, you can see that, uh, we're, before this was a, an indent. Now it's a, it's projecting out, um, and we've removed that rear addition, um, in favor of a, an exposed deck with a pergola. Other than that, the site plan is remaining, uh, relatively the same. Uh, we are not requesting any variances. Um, we're, we're within our setbacks, um, and our coverage requirements, and height requirements as well. Um, so these are some existing photos of the property. This is a street view of eighty-seven, uh, Beachdale Road. This is a view, a side view, uh, from the south of the garage. This is a, a view from the southwest, from the existing kidney-shaped pool. Uh, this is the northeast corner from the street, um, and this is the northwest corner, um, also from the backyard. Uh, this is the entry into Beachdale Road, which is, it's very private and secluded. Um, and here are some shots of the neighboring properties, namely eighty-nine Beachdale Road, uh, two eighty-five Clinton Avenue from the backyard, uh, two hundred Judson, uh, two thirteen Clinton, this is another shot of, uh, two hundred Judson, and, uh, seventy-one fifty-nine and fifty-one Beachdale Road. So you can see it's a mix of architectural styles, some mid-century modern, some Tudor, um, some colonial. Um, so it's a, a smattering of stuff, but I think the, kind of the big takeaway from a site perspective is that the house is very isolated, um, in the spring and summertime, really. You, the only neighbor you can see is eighty-nine Beachdale Road, uh, from the house, and vice versa as well. Uh, so looking at the site plan, um, we are requesting to cut down five trees. Um, and really, the trees we're requesting to cut down are because of their proximity, uh, to the site. Uh, this one in the roundabout, uh, twenty-two inch oak that is extremely host, close to the house, a sixteen-inch oak and an eighteen-inch oak, um, as well as this twenty-two inch oak, um, down here in the backyard. Um, other notable features, um, of the site plan, um, I can, uh, just hop over to the stormwater plan. Um, basically, we are proposing, um, a two-roofed system, one which is gonna be pitching to the back, um, on the west corner, and the other which is gonna be pitching, um, uh, to the east, um, on this corner. So we're shedding water in two directions, um, one which is gonna be caught by this, uh, footing drain and directed back to the Caltech system, which is gonna be for eight Caltechs. Um, and the other which is gonna, uh, direct water around this way, and again, uh, connect to, to this, uh, this drain, um, and also get directed back to the, uh, the Caltech system. Um, as far as lighting, we're gonna have low-level path lighting, um, at the entrance, also at the rear, um, to the deck, um, as well as some lighting, um, at entries. Um, the demo plans, uh, basically, we're, we're demoing, uh, everything except for the foundations. Um, and again, demoing everything except for the foundations. And here we can see, uh, this wall is the only foundation wall that is gonna get, uh, demoed. Um, and although it's showing the full extent getting demoed, it probably is only gonna be this portion, but we really need to see what's, what is gonna happen during excavation, so I'm showing it as fully, being fully demoed. Um, just quickly to go through the, um, the floor plans, uh, this is the lower level, uh, floor plan along with the entry. It is a split level, um, so if we go from the lower level up, um, driving into the garage, there are a few steps up into a hallway, and this is really gonna be used for utility and extra bath and laundry space. Um, there's gonna be a, a, a quite beautiful family room with large expansive, uh, windows. This is a twenty-four-foot window wall, um, that leads out to the deck and the rear pergola. Uh, there are steps that come up to the entry level, where we have a living room, um, a, uh, a stove, a, a, a wood or gas stove. I don't think we've decided yet. Um, their kitchen, a butler's pantry, and a dining area. And this section of the house, uh, when you enter into the foyer, which enters in low and, and kind of explodes out into this large living area, um, is a, a living room and an in-law bedroom, um, along with a, a non-suite bath and closet. Um, moving up from, uh, from the entry level up to the upper level, um, the primary bed, walk-in closet, and primary bath, um, also has a little upper deck, also with, uh, with big, beautiful, uh, sliding door, uh, and a hall bath, um, with three bedrooms on this side. Um, the roof plan relatively straightforward, um, there are, there are two main roofs, um, along with a, an entry roof. Um, both of the roofs are sloping, uh, they're both TPO roofs, um, sloping at a quarter inch per foot. Um, and they're, they're all draining backed, sorry, that, that keeps popping up. Um, keep draining back to a, uh, a continuous hidden gutter on this side, and also to a continuous hidden gutter on the east side. Um, at the entry roof, we will have, um, some slipped insulation with a roof drain. Um, so as far as materiality, I'm gonna present this page, and then I'm gonna hop over just to another deck that I put together specifically for the, the planning board meeting. Um, the main materials that we're gonna use for the house are, uh, a gray aquaia for the exterior siding, and we're gonna use it in two applications, one being a vertical application, the other being a horizontal application. Uh, and we will also be using a, um, a standing seam metal for, for some of the accent siding. And where we're gonna be using the standing seam is gonna be at this indented area here, um, as well as the entry, and also at the, uh, the backside of this. Um, you'll see in the parti, basically, what we're playing up is this separation between two main volumes, one being, um, the lower and the upper level on this side, and the other being the, uh, the guest and the in-law suite. Um, so, you know, we try to emphasize it in a few different ways, one being spatial, which is just separating the volumes through, you know, bringing in, uh, bringing in, uh, the facade, um, but also with materiality. All of the accents at the windows, um, and also at the roof, um, will be using, uh, a polyash wood, um, some painted MDO. Um, and will, uh, we may use some composite trim or, um, MDO at the fascia, um, and some red cedar stain to bring some warmth, um, to the, to the gray. Um, so we, we wanted to use some mahogany at the door, um, and then some pops at the underside of the soffit, uh, just to bring some warmth to the, to the color scheme. Um, some simple, like, fixtures from Sonaman. Um, uh, for the deck out on the rear, we'll be using, uh, a TimberTech composite product. Um, and then for the windows, uh, we will be using, uh, triple-glazed Chuko, uh, tilt-and-turn European-style window. Um, so just to go through some of the renderings, uh, this is the, this is the entry view, um, where you can see the, the volume with the bedrooms, um, the entry, um, and the guest suite. And, uh, forgive me for all the renderings, but I thought it was nice to show little vignettes, um, just, just of some of the architectural moments, um, of the, of the house. Um, this is more of a close-up, uh, bird, not really bird's eye view, but, um, straight-on view. Um, at the roof level for the entry, um, just to see some of the soffit detailing, um, as well as the window detailing, and the relationship between the windows, um, and the garage door down here. Um, another view of the same, at the entry, uh, we're gonna be building some kind of architectural concrete, uh, planter system, um, with concrete stairs, um, and again, the, uh, the standing seam metal. And here you can start to see the, uh, the white TPO roof, um, from above. Um, the architectural detail, uh, at the windows is, uh, is gonna be a, it's gonna be a box, so a five-quarter, um, uh, polyash trim with a painted MDO, and really, you know, what the detail is, is playing up here is the depth of, depth of the window, um, which brings some architectural interest to it. Um, but you can see that the palette actually works really nicely. We'll be going with like a, a very dark standing seam against the lighter gray of the aquaia, and then the, the western red cedar. Another view of the entry, um, and then this is at ground level as you enter into the house. Um, now we're moving to the rear of the house, um, this is from the existing pool area. Um, and so here you can see, uh, this is one of the bedrooms, and then all the windows up here are either bedrooms or, uh, or bathrooms. Um, and that's the rear of the house, so really, the nice detail here is that, um, kind of both sides, we, we've maintained the parapet, um, and this is where we're draining all of the water. Um, and I saw this really cool detail at a farm, uh, a few weeks ago, where instead of doing like a really sunken, uh, Yankee gutter, it's kind of like, uh, they've kind of built a gutter above, which I'm kind of excited to do, which directs water back into the gutters and then, and then down into the, uh, the footing drain. Um, so, um, so we'll, we'll, we'll do that, I guess, during construction, uh, drawings. But this is the rear, so, um, inside here, this is the family room, um, these are two, uh, six-foot sliders. They both open, um, in opposite directions, um, you know, a, a low deck with a pergola, um, and here's the deck off of the, uh, the primary suite. And, uh, because it's a split level, this window, um, which is hanging out here, is, uh, to the butler pantry. It's the detail of the pergola on the sunscreen. The detail of the corner window. Detail under the pergola. Uh, the northwest corner view, um, and what I kind of liked about this view is, you know, it's mostly a gray scheme, um, but then you get these kind of, you know, these pops of, you know, that warm wood. Um, and here, your eye is kind of, you know, it is directed up to the, to the upper soffit, but then also to the deck, um, as it, it goes from soffit to opening up and becoming the pergola. Um, and I really like that read, so we're trying to keep that, keep that alignment, um, so it draws your eye kind of in there and then out into the pergola. And like, another cool, I guess, feature, spatial feature about the pergola is, you know, we're, we're always playing with volumes kind of sliding past each other, and so, you know, having this wall here that could house, uh, you know, a grill or a piece of furniture, um, and then having the, the deck kind of slide out, um, from that volume is kind of a cool, cool detail. Um, this is the back entry to the, uh, to the kitchen, so this is a sliding door. Um, this large window, uh, is where the dining area is, um, and this is where the, the kitchen is. You can see here, kind of, um, that when you enter in, you enter into a nine-foot ceiling, um, but then when you enter into the living area and the kitchen, it explodes up into a fifteen-foot-six ceiling. Again, like, just, I'm trying to emphasize this idea of like two volumes and the separation, um, with, with this dining room volume that also expresses itself at the entry. And, uh, you know, we've been kind of playing around with some idea for the steps entering, entering into the kitchen, um, still kind of detailing through it, um, but trying to make the stairs feel light and not like something that's a big, heavy, concrete volume. Um, so, you know, perhaps like pushing, pushing this back and expressing the stair tread, um, would be something that's nice. Um, and, uh, this is the shot of the guest suite volume and, uh, the end of my presentation. So, um, willing and able to take any questions that the board may have.
Anyone on the board have, uh, questions or comments?
How's the exterior, um, aquaia, is that how you say that, um, weather?
So aquaia is, um, it weathers, uh, so it's a through-body material, so it's gonna stay gray for its lifetime, um, and it's tested in very humid environments, um, for up to twenty-five years, like submerged in wood. Um, it's a highly resistant, uh, wooden material. But it doesn't weather like a spruce or a pine or an ash, yeah.
And the lengths on that, is that something, like, how do you obtain the lengths in the seaming of that?
Yeah, good catch on that detail. So right now, I'm showing it as a 10-foot seam. I haven't fully worked out how it's gonna be seamed yet. I do like the idea of not doing it as a staggered system, something that is more of a vertical stack, but I haven't fully worked that out.
Just curious.
Yeah.
My other question is, in your depiction of the, which I really like, thank you for your drawings there, the landscaping with the retaining walls and stuff, is that the actual landscape plan as far as how the retaining walls are gonna be within the landscape?
So those are all, so forgive my, like, crude representation of them. Those are all existing stone walls on the property currently. We're not touching them, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
No, no, sorry.
Anyone else?
Pitch is a quarter inch per foot, is that gonna be it up?
I think so. According to JAF. Yeah, I went through, actually, I've been in touch with their roofing team, and we have studied the roof, the number of gutters, and they've given their okay. I'm sorry, guys, this is embarrassing.
It's okay.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, so I've definitely, I've vetted the slope, because I was concerned about that as well, because it's not necessarily the pitch, but it is the length of the pitch that I was kind of concerned about. So they've given sign off.
Was a landscape plan here?
There wasn't a landscape plan provided, and that was one of my comments, whether they were planning to, you know, provide one, or whether they're planning just to pay the fee in lieu of planting.
So there's not really any landscaping that we're doing. We're gonna keep all of the existing landscape that's currently on the property. So, I mean, if you can, if we just refer to the site plan, this can also read as a landscape plan.
Are there any issues with removing the trees?
Well, so they can, I mean, there is the replacement of tree value. So if they choose not to pursue planting of trees, then they would pay in fee in lieu of, and that would go to the tree fund.
Okay.
I think that my client is interested in replacing the trees in kind.
Have enough space for it.
Yeah, we definitely have the space for it.
So maybe next month, you can provide a planting plan.
Of course.
Anthony, any engineering issues you need addressed before we?
Not really, we didn't really have much of a comment. We had just one question about the walls, but if there are existing, there might be one small new wall, just the height of the wall, that was it. The stormwater they're providing is sized for 100-year storm, and they're really not increasing impervious areas, so it's just a plus. We were good with the plan.
Okay.
Okay, building department, any issues down? Okay, I move that we call for a public hearing next month. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Okay, aye.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
Great, thank you so much, everybody.
Nice project.
Nice project, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Water cooling up there on the top of the hill?
Well, he's right next to the house that they had to raise.
Right, right, yes, I was thinking about that.
So the 100-year storm water management is good. Okay, the last item on our list this evening is 77 Livingston Avenue, pre-submission conference for site plan approval for proposed conversion from single-family residence to two-family residence.
That's correct.
So just want to start with the existing condition. It's a two-and-a-half-story structure, and there's some photos here. It's the corner of Livingston and High Street, like the Blue House. I'm sure you are not familiar with, there's some pictures here of the backyard. We're not really changing anything to the building envelope, besides two windows that will be required on the downstairs apartment unit we are creating for, as a means of egress for two bedrooms. And we are creating, as part of the project, that has more patio in the back, that I will show you in a minute. Those are current elevations of the house. Living story, the street elevation, the back elevation, and here is really where the proposed work to the living envelope, which is replacing two of those windows, and not really any other work to the outside of the house.
Are the windows sizes you're replacing the same? Are you changing the opening?
We're just changing from a double to a casement.
Egress, go.
So the current configuration is you come in, there is a large living room, dining room, and kitchen in the back. You go upstairs and bedrooms, there's a feed bedrooms, and a study. And then on the top floor, there's a playroom and another bathroom. The owner is a widow and empty master. She's been in the house for over 25 years. She would love to continue living in Dobbs Ferry, but would use upstairs, and she doesn't get a house as big as she has right now. So the basement right now has a living space and laundry and another bathroom. So that's really the space where we'll be creating the apartment unit. Not touching the mechanical space, that's in the back of the basement. It's really just this portion, if you will.
So there's a new apartment for her?
It's not really clear how she's gonna divide it up. I think eventually it will become that, but in the first years, she might be living upstairs and working upstairs. Some pictures of how the basement looks like now, the living space looks like now with the laundry, living space, and the existing stair that would be chopped from the bottom of the water. It's a walkout basement, there's a door, you can just walk out, you're not graded in the back.
And that would be the new entrance to the apartment?
And then part of that also, to create a more accessible way of their future tenants to come in, is to part this path from High Street, assuming people coming from the train station, you'll have to come out the corner, high in living story, but having a more straightforward way of accessing the house to a new stair, which is something in this project as well. This page, I have the, sorry, 450 square feet patio we're creating back, to add a shed for garden tools. The engineers have made a documentation, this stormwater population, that is doing a trade-off, which is capturing the borders from half of the roof, that's 500 square feet, and then proposing a pool deck to make care of that. And then the stair would be a bit of a block, like delivered this on. West Moncton Hollow is a natural hollow that would blend in with the landscape. The patio area would be covered with Houston favors. The railing, the stair, would be a TimberTech black composite railing, and then you have steplights facing out. The plan of the created apartment is that in the entry door standbouse, we're using that entry unit, but we have a whole set of kitchen, dining, swimming space, one bathroom, and getting a bathroom. Laundry is with a closet, and a small closet. And those are the two windows we'll be replacing, the basement and the patio side.
Is there a kitchen?
Yes, there is a kitchen.
Well, does the board have any comments, questions?
I'm curious, have you had any interaction at all with the people that live in the multifamily housing? House just immediately below your site, have you had any interaction with them at all?
Not directly, I mean, of course, we sent the notice, like in the mail. My son and I haven't spoke to my client, she has discussed that with them.
Anthony, you have some concerns in your memo.
Yeah, we just had a few comments regarding stormwater. One being, it seems the system is sized for a smaller storm. It's resized for the 25-year storm. It's all in the memo. I wasn't sure why you were picking up the roof and not the patio that's being put in. It looked like you could maybe get to the drywells. We'll have to just see, you know, how the patio is draining, you know, for the rear. You have to provide some kind of drainage to pick that up. Or at least direct it to a good spot, where it's not gonna affect the lower property. I mean, maybe, you know, a lot of these problems would go away if you considered maybe like a porous paver, or, you know, for that patio, or something like that, maybe. But, because you're gonna need more than one Caltech if you go through the 25-year storm.
You should go up to the 25-years.
Yeah, yeah, for some reason, it seemed to be only sized for the water quality storm, which is an inch-and-a-half storm, I'm not sure why you did that. So that's, and a couple of other technical questions, but that'll need to be addressed.
Okay, we'll come to the engineer, but has the memo been sent?
It was sent out, I'm not sure it's on the, it should be on the website.
We haven't put it on yet, we'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Valerie, do you have any issues?
No.
Building department, no? Well, since there are a number of engineering issues that have to be resolved, why don't we, do you think you'll be able to spend some time on that? I know you haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll contact them. I thought you actually had contacted the department here, right, I was saying before I proposed the solution, but I guess I'm mistaken. So I'll contact the engineer, ask him to review the memo, and if he has to boost the capacity to text, we'll do it.
Okay. Well, I, just because of that and how close it is to the house below, I move that we call for a public hearing at the next meeting, assuming you can get these engineering issues resolved. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything that we want to discuss before we close the meeting?
Can I ask something? I don't know if this is Dan or Valerie, but what is our code for sprinkler systems in Dobbs Ferry? What is our code for sprinklers in Dobbs Ferry?
Just about every...
If you do 50% renovation, Gabrielle, here's a copy of the memo if you want, we'll send it out also. If you do 50% renovation to the house, then you will add a sprinkler system.
And does it have to be a certain amount of floors, or is it just 50%?
If you do a third-floor automatically, New York State code, you have to sprinkle the third floor and the path of egress, but it's only 50%.
And is that residential, or is that also commercial?
Most commercial spaces have to be sprinkled anyway. Yeah, but that's just residential, our local law for the sprinklers.
So the house on Beechdale that we sell on?
That's gonna be fully sprinkled.
That has to be fully sprinkled.
That was what I was kind of thinking.
We require that, I think that's more than 50%.
Right.
It'll be fully sprinkled.
So anything new that is more than 50%?
Yes, and in the next code cycle, I believe they're gonna have that in any new house, and anywhere in New York State has to get a sprinkler, a residential sprinkler.
Well, the efficacy is proven, I mean, it really makes a huge difference in our events.
Especially now that people have, as we learned at Valerie's, people have all these electric battery things that are everywhere, and that can be, start fires.
Couple months after the...
Charging stations for cars.
The cells have been compromised, that was amazing to me.
We try to keep them out of the house.
But even if they have them in the garage, it's an issue?
It is, we try our best to keep them outside the houses.
Okay.
All right, anything else? I move that we close the meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.